All right, the first item is the public hearing is the ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the stormwater utility fee as mandated by Congress. The second public hearing is an ordinance for the annual budget for the general fund, state street aid fund, community development fund, downtown VIP fund, sanitation fund, capital projects one fund, stormwater utility fee, our fund, Lenore City DEA fund, Lenore City State Drug Fund, for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018. And let me stop right there for just a moment and announce that, of course, the agendas didn't, wasn't printed till early Saturday morning and the reason for that, we wasn't able to get the certified tax rate and it will be dropping from 106 to 99 cents, so that's something that City Council and I are certainly proud to be able to pass out on instead of giving it at 106, add it at 99 cents, and I hope that you all will sign. Okay, the next public hearing is an ordinance to provide revenue for the municipality that Lenore City County allowed in Tennessee for the property tax year 2017. The next public hearing is an ordinance for the annual budget, budget for Lenore City Schools for the fiscal year, July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018, for the general purpose fund, sales tax fund, federal projects fund, and food service fund. The next public hearing, an ordinance to amend section 8, 101 of the Lenore City Municipal Code defining alcoholic beverage to reflect current state law. The next public hearing is an ordinance to amend section 8, 206 of the Lenore City Municipal Code defining beer to reflect current state law. The next public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the city of Lenore City to impose and collect an inspection fee concerning alcoholic beverage. The next public hearing is an ordinance to amend the amount of the city of Lenore City percent to, Tennessee, Tennessee code annotated percent to 137204 to rezoned property located at 705 Bond Street from C3 Highway Commercial District to R3 High Density Residential District. And the final public hearing is the ordinance to establish a fullway stop sign in some states on G Street and 6th Avenue in Lenore City. We have with us tonight Mr. John Carlson, he's a public works consultant with the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, commonly known as M Task, who helps guide us in situations such as the one we have here tonight. And Margaret Norris, who has been with M Task for a very long time, certainly glad to have both of you here with us. And John, if I can ask you, come forward first and, again, I know what most of these folks are here for, I believe, is the stormwater fee, and go over and then I won't give them a chance to speak, but I want you to explain the program, if you will, and then they may have some additional questions or you may even answer some of their questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being with us.
Yes, sir, happy to be Mr. Mayor. Okay, here tonight to discuss the stormwater program in the state of Tennessee and in Lenore City in particular, and options for funding stormwater programs.
And, and John, if I can, let me stop you just a second, sometimes these microphones, I've noticed it myself, can everybody hear him that's in the back? Okay, can you step a little closer to the mic?
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. All right, in public works, which is my field, I started out as a city engineer, there's two issues that you have to deal with, you have to deal with water quantity and water quality now. Formerly, the only thing that we had to be concerned with as a city was quantity. Our concern as a, as a city was to protect the lives and property of the citizens, so the only thing we wanted to do was get rid of the water as fast as we could, and we weren't concerned about the water quality of rain. So, local stormwater used to just be a local concern with that local flooding until water quality became an issue. Somewhere back in the 70s, the federal government decided that everything that was going into the drainage system of the city was coming out to waters of the state. This is right outside New Bern, North Carolina, on the banks of the Deuce River. About 15 to 30 minutes after a large rainfall event, they had thousands of fish come floating up on the banks, and they figured out that it was from chemical spills and stuff in the street drainage area of New Bern that caused this fish kill. There's lots of beaches that wind up being closed, there's places I've been to where there's a notice that you can't go swimming at the beach within so many minutes of a rainfall event. It all ties back to the pollutants that get washed into the system from the rain. So EPA responded to this back in the 70s, they came through first and had a big program to get all the cities that didn't already have sanitary sewer to build sanitary sewer systems. And then after that had been in place for a few years, they started looking at other sources of pollution, and they decided that pollutants being washed away from cities were the other larger offender that they could attack next. And so they decided that cities were going to have to get permits to address stormwater and that they're going to have to address six things: public education and outreach, public participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff, post-construction runoff, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. And that's where cities had to look at their own facilities and programs and make sure they didn't cause pollution. So we have to address quality, however, at the same time, cities didn't get out of the role of having to address quantity, because quantity can still lead to drainage failure. And we've seen some of this recently in the state of Tennessee, and probably will see more in the future. So we have to deal at the local level with the concern that we've always had, trying to avoid flooding, and now we have to deal with making sure that we try to remove pollution from the water that gets, that drains out of our cities. So, the city was mandated to get a permit from the state of Tennessee, and the mayor representing the city had to sign a notice of intent, and that's basically a legal contract with the state of Tennessee saying that the city intends to comply with the state permit. So you have an approved program that you've got to fund. Funding options, well, what are some of the things you can do? You could do nothing, you could try and leverage your fund dollars with bonds or loans, fund the program with existing general fund dollars, dedicate a property tax increase to your program and fund it out of general fund. You could try to let development fund your program, or you could make your program user-funded and set up a stormwater utility. So the do-nothing option. We got the permit, staff, just do what you can to try and stay in compliance, but we're not going to be able to give you any money, we don't think they're really going to do anything about this, let's wait and see what happens before we spend any money on this thing. How might the state react to that? Okay, you have signed a contract with the state committing to accomplish certain elements in accordance with agreed milestones. By failing to adequately fund the program, these will not be achieved. So these regulations are mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency and the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. Penalties for noncompliance with regulations can be as harsh as $10,000 per day in civil penalties. A director spot order could have fines of $1,000 and $2,000 per day, with each day being a new fine. They can also withhold stormwater permit applications for new development or new construction for a city that is noncompliant with the program, which would basically put a moratorium on development in Lenore City. Got some information a few years ago about some of the bigger fines that had come out at that point in time, and back in 2005, they had already, from 2003 on up, 92 is when they did the phase ones, which was Memphis, Nashville, Chattanooga, and Knoxville, but then 2003 forwards, they did the cities over 10,000, and they'd come up with $8 million in penalties by that point already. A couple of larger ones at that point in time, they fined TDOC, the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and one of its prime contractors, $800,000. There's the state, finding the state for not obeying the rules. And they fined the city of Chattanooga $635,500, and took over control of the city's program. They said, "We are not satisfied with the progress you're making, you're not doing it in a timely manner, you're not achieving your milestones like you're supposed to, and you haven't funded your program properly." So not only did they have to pay this big fine, but they lost control over their program, and the state started setting their milestones for them and started telling them how much they had to fund their program. There's also other tables out there where you can go on the web and look at enforcement actions against citizens and cities, the state maintains a website, TDEC does. All right, so that's what could happen if you didn't, if you decide you weren't going to direct any funding to your program. So you have to, it's established you have to fund your program. This is a federal mandate which is forced onto the state, who has forced it onto the cities in Tennessee, and once you are designated as a qualified municipal separate storm sewer system and permitted by the state of Tennessee, you must comply. So can we fund our program with bonds or loans? You're authorized to issue revenue bonds and other bonds, and you can do those for stormwater facilities. You can dress revenue in general obligation bonds for stormwater utilities and facilities. The same authority that gives you that to collect sewer user fees and require the owners to pay the connection would support the payment of revenue bonds. So general obligation bonds, same way, they're backed by the issuers, which would be the city in this case, so that would be another option. The problem with using bonds is there's not a good practice to use borrowed money for operations, okay? You do borrowed money, bonding is for capital improvements generally, so you wouldn't want to use that for, for operations and maintenance. State revolving loan funds, state revolving loan fund, you can borrow, another way to borrow money, and they have designated money especially for stormwater, to where they even forgive the principal sometimes, so it basically works out being a grant. They have money available for planning, mapping, construction, and equipment. The eligibility is case by case, at open cycle on the applications, anything from 100,000 into the millions, and like I said, the, the interest rate is below market based on your circumstances, but for stormwater, sometimes even winds up basically being a grant. For construction and or equipment, there's a 20-year payback for planning or mapping, it's five years. Once again, though, this is a good way to leverage revenue from projects and equipment, but not for funding your operational costs. So existing general fund, do you have enough money in your existing general fund to fund a whole new program? Did you have that much fat in your budget all these years that all of a sudden you have to come up with a whole new program and department to fund? Most places don't, you know, you had your pie cut up a certain way and all of a sudden you're going to have to reduce the size of everybody else in the city's pie in order to fund this new program. That generally is not going to work out too well. So general fund with a tax increase, you know, that as long as you're going to make everybody's slice of the pie stay the same, you're going to add a whole new department to your general fund and have to fund it through property tax revenues, do a tax increase. So you could do a local option sales tax as well to pay for stormwater. These have not been challenged in the state of Tennessee. The problem again, though, is, as anyone who's participated budget type knows, it's difficult sometimes to maintain dedicated funding for any particular department if there's needs in other departments. It's hard to turn down the fire department or the police department to fund something like stormwater when they're saying, "We've got to have this piece of equipment, or we've got to have these additional personnel, or we can't protect the citizens of Lenore City." But at the same time, you've still got to meet a federal and a state mandate. So funding the program with development, back before the big semi-depression that we had in the development community for several years, 10 or so, 12 years ago, when development was just booming in the state, there were a few cities around the state that were funding their entire stormwater program with fees that they were putting on the developers. You can fund certain aspects of your program with development, but those would be service charges where the developer's actually paying for a service that they're getting from the city, like plans, review, or inspections, to recover those costs, but you don't want to try and cover your entire program. One of the cities outside of Nashville had me come and do a presentation like this several years ago before that bus hit the, the development, and they decided that they weren't going to do anything, that they were just going to keep funding their program with their development fees, and I said, "That'll work as long until you get developed out or until there's a recession and you don't have these development fees coming in." And a couple of years later, that recession hit and the development stopped, and they called us up and they said, "Hey, we need some help, we're going to have to reexamine it because exactly what you said has happened, we don't have any funding anymore for our program because nobody's developing anything right now." So you can fund, fund certain aspects like inspection and plans review fees, things that are directly attributable to the developer, but you don't want to try and fund your entire operations and maintenance with development fees. So it's short sighted to use that to fund the entire go and end budget for a program. Sooner or later, development won't fund the program or development will be negatively impacted. Even if development's going on and you haven't built out, you might make yourself not as competitive as your neighbors are for developers, that they can get a better deal down the road if they're not having to pay the entire cost of your stormwater program. So we come to user funding, doing a stormwater utility. You have, through the Tennessee Code annotated, the statutory authority to enact a stormwater utility fee, to enable municipalities to regulate stormwater discharges, drainage facilities, construct and operate stormwater management control facilities, the authority to fix and require payment of fees for the privilege of discharging stormwater. And one of the first things that the cities across the state asked for from M Task was to come up with a uniform model ordinance to help folks get on the same page with doing the stormwater utility. And we developed one of those, and I think y'all has incorporated parts of, of that in, in using yours. So one of the things that they all have in common is the legislative findings and policy are the enabling legislation that allows you to do it. Then it goes through the steps of creating the stormwater utility, defines things within the ordinance, talks about the funding of the stormwater utility, and the fund itself, the restrictions on it, what it's to be spent for, the operating budget, the stormwater user fees, what they're based on, property classifications, and then it comes up with a base rate, okay? Adjustments, depending on what the property owner does to try and eliminate some of their stormwater discharge, or where they're located in the system, can their fee be adjusted? And then it establishes that the property owner, not the renter, would be the person responsible in the end for paying the charges, and it goes over the city's billing procedures and the penalties for late payment, and then an avenue of appeal for fees, and then we included some appendices with some sample documents and ways to come up with that base fee. What you are basically doing is coming up with a budget that meets the needs of the city's program to stay in compliance with federal mandate, and then some cities also go ahead and fund drainage improvements and repairs and maintenance, instead of having that, leaving that as a general fund expense, they pull it away from the street department's general fund dollars and put it under this as well, and then fund it out of a guaranteed revenue stream. So we went through the exercise of coming up with how you would calculate your budget, how you would come up with what the base residential rate would be, and those are all available online along with the contents of the ordinance as well, and the city has made this information to, available to people also. So we'll just bust through that.
Can't stop you just a second.
Yes, sir.
And ask you, in your opinion, compared to ours, the cities around us, is our rate much lower than, much higher than theirs?
What did the final rate wind up being?
$3.
Yeah, $3 right now is below the state average.
Okay. And can you tell me how many, just, I want to hope you do this off the top of your head, how many cities in the state of Tennessee is, that's filed under the MS board?
There are about 92 permitted cities in the state. When you throw in counties, it gets up around 100, and out of the cities and counties, it's right at, two-thirds of them have a stormwater utility fee in some form or another. It's, the number is about 64, 65, something like that. And then I have one, I've had a couple since y'all were in contact with me, I'm going to be stopping in Lebanon on my way back to West Tennessee tomorrow because they're getting ready to start the process to institute one. So there's, there's more.
And how long have you been done as top worker for the university?
Well, I've been with the university almost 20 years now. I've been helping with stormwater since the first phase two permits came out in 2003. So the majority of my time seems to be spent on stormwater for the past, what's it, 14 So I go, in some things, I'm just in west to middle Tennessee, but on stormwater, I'm We've done surveys, there's one from 2004 where we checked what they were, how they were funding their programs. And then we followed up in 2007 and it did about double by then. Our latest one was 2015, and unfortunately, this, it wasn't part of this presentation, but that's the one where it's gone up to about two-thirds. And then we just have some frequently asked questions about how different places came up with their fee, why you have to pay one, what's going to be done with money, things like that, which I understand y'all have put out a Lenore City Stormwater Utility Fee frequently asked questions that addresses all these questions that were answered in this part of this presentation, only it addresses them specific to Lenore City. That's a helpful document. So we talked about doing nothing as far as funding your program, and that's not a viable option if y'all don't want to, if you want to stay out of court and want to be able to continue having development take place in Lenore City, you have to fund your program. Grants and loans, that's fine for equipment, planning, mapping, and infrastructure, but those have to be repaid, and there's just not any grants out there for stormwater, other than that special fund that's set aside with the state for a long loan program. Fund it with additional general fund dollars, you know, did your budget have enough fat in it for a whole new department? Most, most cities I've worked with did not. Dedicating a property tax increase to your program and funding it from the general fund, it's a good solution, really easier than doing a stormwater utility, if you can ensure that you always be able to fund that from the general fund and meet the increased needs as the program matures, because this has been in place, the phase two program that you're under since 2003, and not only is it not going to go away, but at some point in time, there's going to be a phase three for cities that are smaller than y'all. So letting development fund your program, not a reliable long-term solution for a total program budget, and not good for the development and economic health of, of the city. And then there's making your program user-funded, setting up a stormwater utility, which is equitable and dependable and gives you a dedicated revenue stream with no general fund budget battles. So general fund, that's not a new concept, you can implement it pretty quickly, there's not really any new overhead involved. A stormwater utility fee is a new idea for most people, and it requires that the city educate the public and let them know what's going on. It can take a little while to get it set up, you may have, depending on how you administer it and how you bill for it, there might be some new overhead involved, but on the other hand, you have a dedicated revenue stream and your program doesn't have to compete for general fund dollars budget type. And goes back to the surveys again. And remember, the reason we're having to do this is because everything that goes, runs off your streets and parking lots and everything enters the waters of the state, and we're trying to prevent things like this from happening. Main reason, or flooding in your city, and also because it's a federal mandate, you really don't have any choice. Is it?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, John. And I'll ask you to have a seat for just a minute, and we'll open it up for, if anyone has any questions, the city council or myself will try to answer those, or Mr. Carlson either one.
I have some questions.
All right, come forward, Bob, you live.
I'm Bob Maroney, I've been practicing as a registered engineer in several states for something over 50 years, and I've designed storm sewer systems in, for the state of Virginia, West Virginia, Mississippi, Oklahoma, and Tennessee, and done work for FEMA in the past. I know a little bit about storm sewer design, I would say, but it would seem to me that this revenue for this part, what we need to know is, if we need to monitor the effluent from there, is that being done in this, in this city? Is the effluent that's going in being monitored by anyone? And how many acre-feet per year of water do we have going in the Tennessee River? Anybody know that?
We would have to look into that.
That's not a permit requirement.
Right, Greg, Greg Buckner would be able to inform us of that, and if I can get your phone number.
It would seem at this point in time that we may not have a problem for this city at all, except unless it's being monitored and it's not the design of the, of a storm sewer system, but the quality of the effluent that's being, they're wanting more control of, is that true?
No, sir, it's not, it's not a permit requirement.
What's that?
That's not a permit requirement, it's not based on monitoring, it's based on complying with those six minimum controls that were set forth by the state in order to get the permit. The city had to say how they would comply with those six minimum controls, and there's not a monitoring component to it, other than they And there's not a monitoring component to it, other than they are required to do some monitoring over a five-year period to go out and take some samples and send those into the state. But it's not based on a continuous monitoring of certain monitoring points or discharge points.
So if we're...
As long as you're doing the things that are in the permit that they signed an NOI to do to reduce pollution, those are best management practices. And TDEC, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation accepts that those will reduce the pollution that are coming from Lenore City.
So if we, if we had virtually no pollution, we're still gonna have to comply with that, is that right?
Yes, sir, it is.
But this doesn't seem...
No, sir, it doesn't.
Don't seem right.
It, it doesn't, but that's the way it is.
Yeah.
So...
And actually, monitoring is one of the most expensive aspects of a program. So really, this permit was set up to try and reduce pollution without having cities spend most of their money on monitoring and writing reports, instead trying to intercept pollutants before they got in the water. So to spend their money on doing stuff instead of taking samples and writing reports about those things.
I, I could see if we could have a lot of pollutants if we have a crossover with sanitary sewer systems, but...
Yes, sir.
And that's often the case, but you generally figure that out very, very quickly if we, if they do have it. I don't think we have a mixed problem here.
No, and, and that, that was the...
Some isolated cases, maybe.
That was the logic for, for this. They, they came up with a negotiated permit and cities all across the nation have been fighting monitoring requirements because monitoring is so expensive. All that, the collecting the data, the samples and having them run through a laboratory and writing reports is a huge expense compared to just running a street sweeper or vacuuming out inlets or things like that that actually keep the pollutants from getting there in the first place. So we, we actually, believe it or not, even though this doesn't seem like a good thing, we came out ahead by not having to monitor.
You know, showing these great face trails and whatever, you know, that's normally because of some chemical reaction that's gotten in.
Right. But that's just an example.
It's just an example, but we have to keep up with the beauty and the dissolved oxygen content and this stuff and whatever, that's, that's what we should be able to...
Right.
Have some control over this as a city. It seems like a very unfair situation.
Yes, sir. And there are cities out there that, they have what they call a 303D list that tells how polluted or not polluted streams are in the different jurisdictions. And there's some jurisdictions that don't have a polluted stream in their jurisdiction. And then there are some whose program has removed a, a, a stream from the polluted list, but the program still got written up for other problems like the record keeping or something. So it's, you're dealing with the, the federal government. And the state of Tennessee answers to them and has to keep them happy because the EPA comes in and does spot inspections of different cities. They don't, even though Tennessee, the Department of Environment and Conservation has their precedence, they, they're the primary on, on, in the state of Tennessee, the federal government can take that authority away from them and the federal government could be running our program. So the federal government, to make sure that TDEC, that is doing its job, comes in and does spot audits of city programs and come in and does spot audits of TDEC itself. So once a year, TDEC comes into city hall here and says, okay, let us see your records for this part of your program and let's go out and look at some of the construction sites in your city. Prove to us that you are keeping your word, your, your agreement that you signed in your NOI. And then at the same time, the federal government can come in the next week or the next day and say, we're doing an audit. Show us that you and the state of Tennessee are doing what it takes to satisfy EPA's requirements under this program.
Do they, do they come in and take samples?
There's, the state has a sampling program. They try and hit all these sampling points in the state of Tennessee once every five to ten years. And they give the cities the same sampling points and try and have them offset their sampling where they'll get them a little more frequently. And that's how they've determined that some cities have actually, through this program, cleaned up their cities and their waters enough to remove it from being on the impaired or polluted list. So we, we've seen some progress from the program already.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else?
Tony?
Yes.
I guess I better add.
Come on up, Commissioner Shaver.
I won't need your microphone.
I'm sure you won't.
For those who don't know, I'm Van Shaver, vanshaver.com. Some of y'all may read the stuff. What you heard tonight, the gentleman did an outstanding job, there's no doubt about it, is the basics of what these stormwater requirements are. Is there any way you could put that panel up with the six requirements?
Sure.
If you could just put that one up. He's correct that there are requirements the city has to meet, but nothing to justify such a tax is what they're considering. And if they won't pass the tax, that's fine, they can do whatever they want to do. There's a big scary one there about Chattanooga, the twenty-five thousand or six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or whatever. I believe that was a combination of stormwater and sewer overflow in the Tennessee River, I think's what got that one in trouble. And I think what's already been said here is we don't have a combined system. In fact, we don't really have a stormwater utility. That's what they're looking to create. If he gets to the panel, they're gonna see what the six requirements are. And I've talked to the mayor several times, I believe he said to me, and I wouldn't quote him out of context, but right now, there are no plans for any immediate or future changes, improvements, upgrades in the stormwater or flood control systems in the city. Is that fair? Is that a fair statement?
Your top...
Okay. So a tax is gonna generate a half million dollars a year, you would think there's a whole lot of something going to come up with it. Something's gonna improve. We're gonna see docks down here on the river or town creeks gonna look really good or something. Right now, there, to my particular knowledge, there are no improvements that are planned. Again, if we get to the six in it, you'll see what they do have to do. And as the gentleman said, there's no monitoring involved. Mr. Maroney was asking a good question. Well, I mean, they're not requiring us to monitor, I believe is what you said. And that's kind of the whole idea, was to keep the pollutants from going to the river. So right there are your six things, you can see what that entails. One thing that's already been going on for a long time in the county and the city is when you go to get a building permit, if you're going to serve X amount of acres, an acre or two or whatever it is, you have to get a stormwater, or a, a, a stormwater permit. Any, some of the contractors that don't know this, they come out and they tell you all the things you have to do to keep your seal from going into the city's stormwater system, as I understand it. That's in place and the contractors, I think, pay a pretty hefty fee for that also. So that's already been done, collected, and that was the first step of stopping things from going into the stormwater system. That's in there, part of that number six layer. In Lenore City's case, I, I think the biggest red flag I saw, and again, all I wanted to do was let everybody know what was happening. I really had no intention of being a part of this program. I came tonight to watch. I just wanted y'all to know what was happening because this is big, this is forever, this is every month on residents, not to mention the businesses. I mean, this, this is, this is expensive, especially for small marginal businesses, month after month. And whenever they choose to, they can go up, just like wheel tax. This is very, very similar to a wheel tax. So the first thing we saw when you looked at their budget is they took a large number of street department employees and moved them into the stormwater budget. Because the law says in the stormwater budget, you can't use that revenue for anything but stormwater control, flood control. That money collected can only be used for that. So speaking with some of the other officials here, they would maintain a lot of their street department is defined as stormwater control. They sweep the streets, they pick up the curbside brush, and so that's considered now, beginning July first, that's stormwater control. Before July first, it was just a street department cleanup and work. I think they also, once or twice a year, you have a company contractor that comes in and cleans out the storm drains and things like that, maybe fifty or sixty thousand dollars or something I think they charge and that sort of stuff. But if this was about the stormwater, then it looks like you'd want all of that money dedicated to stormwater control, management, improvement, uh, new additions to stormwater. But that's not what it is. We just moved existing employees over there. Now what that does, that will free up the money that's in the street department's budget and the codes enforcement department budget that can then be used for police cars and firemen and things like that. And that's a fine plan too. But essentially, all this is, is just another way of taxing you. It's not a property tax, but it's a tax, or maybe it's a stormwater fee. I guess it's tomato and tomato, I don't know. But again, I would ask you just to look at those things, public education outreach. I'm sure that's putting the picture of the fish on the storm drain. You've seen some of these where it says, don't pour nasty stuff in the storm drain? That's gotta be done. Public participation, I have no idea. Illicit discharge and detection, that's happened a time through Lenore City. We have found people dumping stuff they weren't supposed to, went, found and find them and took care of. So we do that. Construction site runoff, that's already being dealt with through the permitting system. Post-construction runoff, same sort of thing. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Now if anybody saw, if, if anybody sees five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of annual requirements and that, you're doing better than I, I don't see it. As, as I've been told by some, devil, one of these days, that's fine, then one of these days when something happens, that's when you come to the people and say, listen, we're the jam. The whole city sewer system fell out, we gotta put a whole new sewer system in. But the really bad part about it is, is two-thirds of the city has no stormwater control of anything. No storm drains, no underground plumbing, no anything. Most of the residents, some of the businesses, when the rain runs off your property, it's gonna run into the creek and then run into the Tennessee River. So that'll be discussed later on by exemptions and stuff like that, I'm sure. Anyhow, I just kind of wanted to give the other side of the gentleman's presentation, fine presentation as, as I've ever heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaver. Anyone else?
I'll try to speak into the microphone for you guys.
Thank you.
It is very clear, listening to the presentation tonight, this is an unfunded mandate. And the issue does not start in this chamber, but instead starts in Washington DC. And because of that, there are some things that apparently don't make any sense. And we've talked about some of those in the last hour or so. But another component of this that's very obvious is that you're faced with a new operating expense. You have no choice. There are things that you have to do or the fines will be gigantic. So I would ask that you use the spirit of sound judgment, as I know each of you continue to do, to guide our great city and to make good choices. And having known most of you over the last several years, I know you're very good people. Use the money the wisest possible way to protect us, to do the right thing and to take care of stormwater issues. And I know the government will continue to make unfunded mandates. Try to keep it as safe an environment as you can and try to keep it as business-friendly as you can too, because that will support the economic growth and help us in so many other ways. Each of you over the years have done that, I've seen you do it, I've seen you take risks politically, I salute you for that. And I know tonight's not easy in many ways. Continue to do the right thing and know that you're supported.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come forward. And let me say, after this, this speaker, and again, I'm gonna give everybody the opportunity to speak, so don't get excited when I, when we stop for just a minute and open up the council meeting and then we're going to the agenda and I'll let anybody else speak, okay? Go ahead.
My name is Bob Miles. I'm a resident of Chestnut Ridge subdivision. Chestnut Ridge subdivision was built somewhere around the mid-eighties. Before then, it was a cow pasture out in the country, way out in the country from Lenore, from the Lenore City town. My half-acre lot, when it rains on my half-acre lot, what does not seep down into the ground of my property goes down to my neighbor's property and seeps down into his ground. We live on a hillside, the whole Chestnut Ridge subdivision's on a hillside. It's a quarter of a mile from the top of the ridge to the bottom of the hill at the end of Chestnut Ridge. Now you've got all this water going down through, through, through these yards and what little winds up at the bottom of the subdivision, whose rainwater is that? Mine seeped down into the ground, it didn't get there. But what little bit might have got into the streets and went down to the street and wound up in the ditches at Harrison Road, tell me if that water wound up into the Lenore City stormwater system? That is a low area. Everything in that area surrounding it goes down, downhill to that area. You go uphill to Browder Hall, you go uphill to Norwood, you go uphill here, uphill here, that's a low area. I don't know of, of any of that water, that rainwater that gets into the Lenore City stormwater system, especially mine. Mine seeped into the ground. Now, I read where the attorney general made an opinion that if the rainwater that runs off your property doesn't enter the city's stormwater or flood control system, you would be, you would be exempt from paying this tax. Is that a true statement that the attorney general made?
I can just say, say this about what the attorney general, any opinions issued either at the state level or the federal level. Attorney general's opinion is merely an opinion, it's not the law. So attorney generals often give their opinions about certain issues and that's all fine and good and sometimes it's persuasive, sometimes it's helpful to, to solve certain issues, but in no way, an attorney general's opinion is the law or mandate forcing citizens or forcing communities to do a certain thing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Okay, just a second. Pastor, we're gonna open up the city council meeting now, I'll give you the chance, I'll let you be the next one, okay? All right, we'll conclude the public hearing and go into city councils Monday, June 46, 2017. How do we rock, boys?
Yeller, Burns, Johnson, Shields, Simpson, Waugh.
People want to please stand or remain standing for a pledge or a implication that I'll be giving by the Reverend Dr. Tommy Patterson of the Mary and Ethel Church of the Harvest. Dr. Patterson, if you'll come forward. After that, I'll ask Mr. Miles, if he will, to lead us in the pledge. Be up here.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads. Father, we just thank you tonight that we have another opportunity to call on your great name. I thank you, dear Lord, that you've given us the privilege to be here. I speak and invoke your blessings on everyone who is here, Lord, all the citizens of Lenore City, everyone who's concerned about any matter. I speak, dear God, great wisdom upon them and your grace. I pray, Father, for our leaders, I pray for our mayor and our city council, all of our city leaders. I speak, dear God, by the authority of the word of God, that they're blessed, that they're anointed with great wisdom. Father, that you lead and guide them in every decision. I know, Father, that they have the best interest of all this city and even the state and our nation at heart. So I speak, dear God, your, your wisdom and grace upon their lives. I pray, dear God, for the anointing of the Holy Ghost. I pray by the authority of the name of Jesus Christ, dear Lord, that you help us, Lord, that in everything that we do, we honor you. We praise you that we live in a place, dear Lord, where we can assemble and meet, and oh God, where that we can come together. So we thank you for this nation. Father, we thank you that you have your hand upon every one of us. And I speak that from our president down, even to every member who is here tonight, dear God, that your leadership, grace, and anointing of the Holy Ghost would be upon them. We praise you for everything that you do for us, we praise you for every promise that you've made to us, and we praise you for what you're doing in this place tonight and give you every bit of the glory for it and ask you all of these things in the name of your eternal son, who is our everlasting Savior, and his name is Jesus Christ, and we praise you in his name. And everybody says, amen.
Bob, you'll lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you like to be saying the national anthem?
Okay, there's not any changes to the previous minutes. We do have two sets of those. Do I have a motion to approve? The, uh, emperor, if you will, give me the first dates. They're out on that here for.
It was May eighth, 2017.
Yeah, I got them here now. All right, we have motioned. There's not any changes to the May, May eighth to 2017. That means do I have motion to approve that? Motion, Mr. Shields, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Vice Mayor, any other discussion? Roll call.
Yellen, yes. Hans, uh, Johnson, yeah. Shields, uh, Simpson, aye. Walker.
All right, if there's not any changes to the June fifteenth, 2017 minutes, do I have motion to approve that?
Come on.
Motion, Mr. Yellen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Heinz. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Yellen, yes. Hans, uh, Johnson, yeah. Shields, uh, Simpson, aye. Walker.
I do have one thing if we need to add, Chief White, where you at? Do we need to add that item, or are we gonna include it with the others?
Uh, we should be able to include it, uh, just with, uh, that same, uh, page, okay? Is it that specific?
Okay. All right, here in force, members of the city council. All right, this time, uh, Pastor Varner, come forward. I'll give you the next opportunity. And I know there may be one, two more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Captain.
The membership paper asked me on the way down to our state committee meeting for a quote, and they quoted me correctly. But the first thing I said to them that wasn't put in the paper, I want them to say, and that was this, "I respect you and I respect this council." And, uh, verse 10th, 2 and 1 tells us to pray for those that are authority. And we do that in our church, more than once. We've literally called Mayor Atkins' name out in prayer in the city council. And so, I, I want you to know, I come here not with a spirit of rebellion, but I'm thankful that we have this opportunity to express our differences. And, uh, thank you for the man that paid that price for our freedom and ultimately for the freedom that Christ purchased for us at Calvary and made all of this possible. So, I wanna say that upfront. But, uh, it's my understanding, uh, from the last meeting, this one, I know this has to be done, but I don't know that it has to be done at this moment, immediately. It seems to me that there could be some more discussion, more information. I'm not sure that everyone's been informed enough about this. And, uh, and I know that you said it wasn't a tax, uh, but from my perspective, it feels like a tax. I talked to the attorney for our denomination, and, uh, his words, and I, and I say this cautiously because I'm not trying to finger anyone, uh, he called it under, under the table to ask to get, to give churches. Uh, and I just think it's a slippery slope when we start doing that to nonprofits. Not only us, but schools and, uh, boys and girls clubs and other entities. And, and I'm gonna be careful with what I'm about to say here. I'm not saying this is a reflection of you guys necessarily. But as culture as a whole, thirty years ago, we would never consider putting any fee on the church. Sadly, the church is not respected the way it was at one time by our society. Talking about culture in general, uh, it's, it's almost looked at as another entity or even sadly, a business. But, uh, and I know you, you reference Blount County, and I can't speak for every church in Blount County, but the ones I've talked to, either they're ignorant and they're in violation of law, or they're exempt. They're not paying any rainwater fee. Uh, I wonder how many of the ninety-two cities in Tennessee churches are exempt? I, I wonder. I mean, I, I asked the question last time, and, uh, it wasn't answered. Uh, but I do know from seeking out legal counsel, you do have the prerogative to exempt churches and/or other nonprofits. Uh, so, uh, I would just, uh, you know, ask you to please consider that. Uh, again, you know, regardless, uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I are going to continue to be friends. Uh, Mr. Heinz, I know him well, attended the church some. Uh, Mr. Simpson's brother, used to attend our church. Jennifer and I were still together. And, uh, others of you I've known, uh, over forty years. I've lived here, fifteen years I've lived out of this city. But most of my life's here, so most of you I know. And, uh, I don't know what you function by, we function by in our denomination. Robert rules of order. And, uh, I know if you vote in favor of something, you can make a motion to reconsider. And, uh, I would just ask that you at least do a study about, uh, exempting churches and other nonprofits and let us know what the difference is by doing that compared with doing it for everybody. And, uh, let this community know the difference. Because I do believe most of your constituency constituents would be in favor of, of that, of exempting the nonprofits. If they knew, the, I think that the program could still be funded. Uh, I still think it could be done. Uh, and again, I do know those communities, Bedford, Virginia, for example, found out today their city manager, uh, they have this program in place, and churches are exempt and other nonprofits. So, uh, I would just ask you, someone, to please consider this before it's final, that you do a study and let the, the city know, your constituency, uh, the difference. And I think most of them would be, even if they're opposed to this, they would be in favor of exempting nonprofits. I could be wrong, but that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Varner. I'd say, certainly, you're our friend, Sixth Baptist Church of God is our friend. And I don't think, I know I can speak for myself and members of this city council. When no one enjoys, uh, putting a fee on the churches or the nonprofits, we've been told there's no exemption in the law, and, uh, that's how we took it. And, and, uh, certainly, uh, as I said at the last meeting, uh, I'm glad that you and First Baptist Church, and I'm gonna call them because they was here, I had a representative here last time, and, and all the other churches with the big parking lots. I hope all of us full every Sunday. And, uh, uh, we all need to be there. And, uh, now, some of the atheists may get me for saying that, but that's okay. I won't worry about that if that time happens. My preacher's back there, Dr. Patterson, and, uh, uh, he tries to keep me in line. But, uh, uh, I just, uh, you know, I don't, I don't like it, but, uh, city council and I are going, what, what we feel like is the law. And, uh, uh, that's, uh, we have to, we have to listen to MTAAS, and we have to listen to the city attorney. And, uh, if they come back and, and representatives or the congressmen or whoever, obviously, it, it rolls downhill if they want to make, uh, make a new law and, and show us where our people are exempt. And, uh, I think the city council will certainly look at it, and I certainly will, too. But, uh, we're, we're doing what we think is the right thing to do. We're charged with that, and, and there's been some misleading information out there, in my opinion. And, uh, uh, I think that, uh, we're talking about storm water and clean water. I think if, uh, if something, I hope it never does, and I hope it never happens anywhere else, but happens to us like it happened in Flint, Michigan several years ago. And, and we're sitting here and not doing anything about it. And, uh, having to come up with the funds then to, uh, for thousands or possible millions of dollars, I think, uh, this, this room wouldn't be big enough to hold the people, and rightly so. So, uh, uh, you know, uh, when you're running your household, if you're planning like you should be, you're planning for emergencies, and you're planning for, for things that, uh, that break and things that, uh, unexpected. And that's what we're trying to run the lower city government as a business. If we could stand still and, and not do anything as a government, like some of the governments around us, and, and be able to stand still and not be able to do anything but sit and argue about it. But we're moving Lenore City forward as a business. I believe that. Look at the things that's been done in Lenore City in the last few years. I'm not blowing my own horn. I, I contribute that to the, this city council and to the employees and everyone else. And, and, uh, so, uh, I think we're moving Lenore City in a positive, positive way. Do we like it sometimes? No, we don't. Uh, we don't, uh, we don't want to impose a unnecessary fee, but we can't continue to, uh, exorcise the cost that is costing this city and, and mandates that the federal government continues to put on the state, and the state continues to put it on the cities and the counties. As, uh, the representative from MTAAS says, uh, phase three is coming soon. There'll be other towns around us, smaller towns that's in this county, that will have to comply. I don't know when that'll be. I'm not in charge of that, but, uh, I believe what they're telling me. I, I believe Mr. Carlson. I, I believe he knows what he's talking about. That's reason I asked him to come here tonight to explain to, to the people. Uh, I didn't want him, I didn't want you all to hear it from us, or hear it from the city attorney, or hear it from the city administrator. I want you to hear it from someone that's, that's, uh, has knowledge of it, that's worked in for the last several years.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just one other thing. Uh, I understand what you're saying, but again, uh, you said, but you always understand in law, there's no exemption. But again, uh, the lawyer I talked to, you don't realize, we have close to four churches in this state alone, uh, very strong in the southeast, uh, two, uh, two main members in the United States. So, he's dealt with this many times, and I do know for a fact that, that we could be exempt.
And, and I appreciate that, Pastor Varner. And I also know that, uh, I know enough lawyers that every one of them's got a different opinion, too. And, uh, just like the, the state attorney general's opinion, it's an opinion. And, and, uh, look, I'm not saying that it's a, it's, it's a closed door. I'll be happy to, uh, do some, do some checking, but, but I do believe that we should move forward. Uh, we can always come back and, and amend it, uh, and, and try to, uh, try to do something different. But at this time, I don't think that's the answer. Doing nothing is not the answer. Delaying things is not the answer. Uh, and I, y'all be patient. Just a minute, I'm gonna let you speak. I want everybody here to have a, have a say, okay? All right, who's next? Yes, sir, Mr. Boakes. Come forward.
There were gifts, but, but I wanna know what you're gonna do when you run businesses out of town. I mean, I've got a couple of businesses that are commercial. And if these people get a high bill every month, they're gonna find a place out of town to put their business. And it's a hard, it's gonna be a hardship, I believe, on a small businessman. Uh, whenever you, Pice, or if you, Pice, and I asked him, Dr. Pice, because this shit gonna affect the small man that's trying to make a living, and the big man, he should move out of town and find another place.
Thank you, Mr. Boakes. Yes, sir. Come in, uh, Mr. Blackwater. And I know you'll talk long for thirty minutes, so I may put time on.
Should I sit down?
No, go ahead.
I got you.
Thank you.
No, and, and most of you guys know me, too, but I, I don't have the respect of Pastor Varner and so forth, so I get it, so.
I agree.
We can. No, let me first to say, thank you for giving me, uh, the opportunity to speak. And, um, uh, obviously, being involved in this city for many, many years and trying to be some positive ways, and there may be some that are not so positive and so forth. Let me say this from our standpoint. We've had the opportunity, again, we're a small local general contractor and a small local developer that's in this area. We've had the opportunity, again, to work with everyone that's up here on council and, and certainly with, uh, with Mayor Atkins. And I can tell you, again, from our standpoint, from the development standpoint, there's been more done in this city, like I say, in the last several years than probably prior to that, with the developments on 321 and the infrastructures and so forth. So, we're very much appreciative of what's happened. And the role that this city council has taken to make sure that those things, you know, transpire for us that are out here trying to, again, to bring other businesses and so forth. And I appreciate, again, what Jeffrey was saying, too, again, that in order for this city to continue, it's sustained. Again, we have to do things, and I understand about increases. Being the development business and general contracting business, we get hit every day with expenses and things that, uh, that we're unaware with. And I understand also, too, about unfunded mandates to get put on situations. We've had that from that standpoint. What I would ask of the council, again, I didn't find out about some of this until last week. Again, traveling so forth, I'm kind of in and out of town as it's, as it is. And I understand, again, what, what Pastor Varner is, is talking about. And I, I don't think that we don't need to do anything. I think there's something that needs to be done. We've dealt with this in other communities. We've been in Blount County. We're actually doing a development in Tri-Cities right now. And so, we're dealing with situations that's actually in Jefferson City, arms on Jefferson City, but the Johnson City, as it stands. So, we understand. We've dealt with the city of Knoxville and how different communities have handled their storm water situations in those developments and everything. I do see the criteria that's here, and I have to go back to, to what Mr. Shaver was saying, is in the construction field, there are things that we have to do. We have to get swap permits, and we have to put up barriers and so forth. So, a lot of that, a lot of those things are handled in a pre or a post-construction activity that actually goes on with the site. What I would ask of the council at this point, and I know that the council can, can go and do a act. And again, I am all for that there's things that need to be done. But is there, if there's any way versus voting tonight, and I know that I don't know how time is of the essence to get things moving forward. And I'm not saying for months and months, but to actually go back and look at something, because I think there are, there could be, in, in working with other communities that we've had the opportunity to work with, there can be, I won't call it a win-win-win situation in different things. And there's gonna be things, again, that can be talked about. It may not be just a storm water fee or a storm water tax and so forth. It may have to be something that's a crossbreed between, again, some property tax increases and so forth. But looking at this venue, it could help in such a way. I think the city does need, again, to garner some more monies to continue the development and so forth going on. We're the beneficiaries of that, and I support that fully in all forms and all fashions and everything.
Are you saying you support a tax increase?
I'm saying that, yes. Again, me paying property taxes and so forth, uh, we pay a, a small amount to the city. So, on properties that we've got on 321. But I think if you look at the overall funding and so forth, and I'm not running the numbers, okay? And again, so I'm a little bit uneducated of, about what the fee would be, okay? Because I, I do have, again, some misconceptions in my mind, again, of information that's put out. I, I know Greg is probably not here tonight from that standpoint to ask questions, too. But again, of looking at the acres and, and the fee that's put on those pieces of acres and so forth, or what that would be, and how that reflect, reflects, I guess, back into a tax increase. I know, as we talked about, you said that there would possibly be, may not be, but possibly be some kind of a tax decrease across the board.
Well, I can tell you, there's a, about a, we're taking certified rate. If Council Boakes can take the certified rate and pass the budget tonight, it went from the dollar six down to ninety-nine cents, so, uh, that's, that's a seven cents decrease.
That, that is, like I say, from that standpoint. And how that reflect, reflects, I guess, from a, from the storm water fee and so forth, you know, of where that comes into play. But I know that other communities have handled this, the same situation. I'm fully supportive of that. And I think the city has to do something. There's no doubt about it. But if we can look at something that basically is a win-win-win, again, I understand about the nonprofits. I understand, again, with the churches and things. And if something can be done with some other people in community, bring them on forward, having, again, a workshop or whatever you wanna call it, maybe that's already happened. And if it has, like I say, I apologize. I, I've missed most of that. I was probably, as you would say, back on the beach again on my condo in Destin. So, but if there's something that can happen, like I say, where the businesses are, are supporting that, like I say, maybe this will not a storm water fee, but if it is a tax increase, because we're actually paying, what, is it forty percent of the, of, in the commercial rate? Is that what we're paying?
That's right.
Commercial tax rate?
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, residential's paying twenty-five percent. Is that, is that right? You know, from that standpoint. So, is that, is that something that can possibly be looked at and investigated and so forth? And I, and, and again, we're talking about thirty, maybe sixty days to postpone this until we can take a complete look at it. And maybe, maybe that mandate is something that can have.
Let me, let me say this, Mark. Unfortunately, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at a budget. We're mandated by the comptroller's office to pass the budget by August fifteenth, if by year fourteenth, what we're to.
I have kept me by July fifteenth.
July fifteenth.
Okay.
So.
So, that's, so that's what we're facing, you know. I mean, which I understand that. Right. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, is I understand, again, what, you know, the pastor's saying and so forth. It is, it is unfortunate. And maybe this is something can be opened back. It is, it is unfortunate, and maybe this is something can be opened back up, is sometime in the future from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Who's next? Just, uh, anyone else? John, come forward.
I just wish you'd show us. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, thank you for starting off with some good news tonight. That was, uh, you're looking at a six, seven cent?
Yes, sir.
Decrease? That's fantastic. Fantastic.
Well, I'm assuming the city council votes that, and I'm assuming they will.
Easy getting a vote for decreases, hard getting a vote for increases.
We reduced it four years ago, not near this many people showed up.
To, to follow up a little bit too on what we said a little while ago.
That's what I was looking for there.
The estimated cost for, as a tax increase, was around forty cents, uh, to do this stormwater through.
I don't think anybody wants a forty cent.
And I thought that was a, a good move. Feel like this was the best move.
Like I said, there's a twenty-fifteen.
Well, if we're going to rely on these folks, we ought to rely on looking at how other folks have done it, and they're doing it with the general fund. Now, I appreciate you say it could be as much as forty cents of an increase, but our friends in the churches don't pay property taxes, that exempts them.
Correct.
Our friends in some nonprofits, I believe, don't pay property taxes, so that exempts them.
Correct.
So that solves a whole lot of problems there. Now, I'm not up here saying, you know, it's up to y'all to determine how much of an increase it's going to take, but I, I do believe that, that this could be a way to go. If you drive up and down 321, you'll see my sign, you'll see Mark's sign, you'll see everybody else, uh, quite a few other signs up here. These are spaces for lease. We're trying to bring business to this area. And I'll tell you, they don't come knocking on our doors, beating it down to come here every day. Now, will a stormwater fee stop them? Maybe, maybe not, but there's a whole lot of other places they can go, and it does throw just another log in front of trying to get businesses to come to this area and make this area what it can be. Take a look over there at, at Town Creek, you know, what is it, a hundred and fifty acres there that we're going to try and bring businesses in? And we're going to say, oh, and by the way, we've got this tax. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have it in Blount County, you wouldn't have it over here, but, but we've got this.
You do have it in Blount County.
Okay.
And you do have it in Knoxville in the form of a property tax.
Property tax, yes. So forty-one out of seventy, or forty-three out of seventy-one areas decide to do it via a property tax.
In two thousand and six.
In two thousand and six. Do you know what current they did?
No, I was trying to look that up right now. Oh, it's almost two-thirds.
Okay. So it's, it's even higher now. Please, please, please reconsider, reconsider doing something.
Two-thirds.
Yeah, almost two-thirds have utilities now.
Two-thirds have utilities.
But either, it can be funded, be in what?
Sure. Sure can.
And look, why do we fund our police this way? Why do we fund our fire department this way? Why do we fund our parks and rent this way? Because it makes sense. Why would this utility be any different?
Thank you, John.
Appreciate y'all.
Who's next? Anyone else? This man.
Hi, um, this is kind of the first time I've ever done this, so.
That's okay.
Wait two seconds, I'm short. Um, I guess my question really is for this gentleman here. Um, so you say that this monitoring doesn't happen every five years, if it happens at all?
No, that, that's not what I said. Um, they are responsible for conducting monitoring once during the five-year permit cycle.
And the permit cycle is how long?
Five years.
Okay.
That's the EPA.
So that's the EPA regulation?
Yeah, that's what the state of Tennessee's Phase Two permit says, is that once during the five-year permit cycle, they will be required to monitor a certain number of points within their jurisdiction.
Okay, so in Phase Three, will they be required to monitor more?
They're just starting to talk about that now. Phase Three would not be for Phase One and Phase Two, it would say, okay, here are certain things that we want everybody to do.
Right.
That are, if you're below the ten thousand cutoff for Phase Two.
But none of, none of the six requirements in the permit had anything to do with monitoring, correct?
That's an additional requirement, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kelly Northup.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Northup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Come in, come on.
My name's Monty Ross, I know most of you here.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
My name's Monty Ross, and I know most of you here, but I'm, I just wanted to, I also live in Chestnut Ridge subdivision, and, um, I live toward the bottom of the hill. And when the, of course, when the soils get saturated, then the runoff happens. And, and it's very interesting, because you can watch as the rain starts coming in, there'll, there will be a line coming down a ditch. I mean, it is just a distinct line when it's hit the threshold and the water starts coming. And a lot of water, because we have no storm rains, comes into our, comes by my house. And, and so I just want to say that I appreciate that you're trying to do something and you're putting these fees in place. I know this is a very, very difficult decision for you to take, um, but we need to do something. We need to not depend on the general fund, I think. I think we need to set it aside, put that money, build that, that income, so that projects can be done just beyond just the routine maintenance of dealing with stormwater issues. And so I just wanted you to, to know that I appreciate this effort, um, that you're going through right now. And I know it's hard, and I know it's not very, a very happy one to, for anybody, um, but I do appreciate this effort. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name's Brian Sturgill, a relative moved to the area, please don't discount that to me. My vested interest in, is also, of course, the nonprofit, uh, and also is our schools. I'm a proud father of five children. My wife was told before we got married she would not be able to have children, and the good Lord has given us five. Also have two in college, and I also know, understand there, all the public school, I understand what a burden this would be on our schools, and also our, all of our nonprofits in the area, charitable organizations, uh, things like CARM and, and other things that do great things in our communities, want to tax. So I reached out to my soon-to-be son-in-law, who serves as Virginia State Police Officer in Bedford County, Virginia, and he did some research for me, and he recently asked today, and did confirm that their nonprofits are exempt in the state of Virginia, uh, for, for all of the churches and places of worship. And so, uh, that, so I've shared that with Pastor and, and done that. So, uh, we, we know it's possible, uh, other municipalities are doing that and finding ways to, uh, ease that burden on their schools within their budget. And I would just implore you to let's have, so you guys and ladies have that dialogue, try to be creative somewhere in the budget to, to ease that for our public school system, and also for our nonprofit organizations in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is David Bande, uh, pastor, small church here in the North City, North Long War Church in Yon. And, uh, again, I would just echo, uh, once again, I've lived here for just going on two years, so again, another newbie here don't hold that against me, but I do feel it important to implore, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to please consider the, the nonprofits, um, part of, uh, being in a small church in particular, I understand it's all relative, but, uh, we're trying to serve and do serve the community, and, um, a, a, a fee of this sort, uh, could stifle and would stifle much of the mission that we use here to support our community and the citizens of our community. I understand funding and understand the mandates, uh, that are set before you all, and the great responsibility that that bears. And I echo Pastor Varner's sentiments, his all-respecting prayers are for you for wisdom in this, uh, but I would ask, um, if we can have that, if you all can have that dialogue. I know there's been a lot of discussion, um, but I myself know, known about this for a few weeks now, uh, and I, uh, would, once again, urge the council to, uh, please consider and allow, uh, an exemption, as, as others have mentioned and pointed out, for nonprofits, so that we can continue the mission. I believe that, uh, there would be some way that the mandates could be funded, uh, along with the nonprofits being exempt. I believe that, uh, could happen. Uh, I also would say, again, with the timing, I understand the deadline that you all are under, uh, and, and I, I appreciate that and I see that, but I think it is of, it's that important that if you all would somehow consider an exemption, uh, that it would be worth it, because once these funds and these fees are, are garnered and, and it's, it's started, it's hard to meet back again and then say, well, we're going to meet and take it back. Um, so I would respectfully bring up that point and urge, uh, the council and you, Mr. Mayor, to please consider this, uh, I, I, and again, understanding the, the funding and that those demands that this project requires, and appreciating the attention to detail that is being given. And we love living here, we love serving here in this community, uh, and so I would, I would, again, ask you respectfully to consider this rather than, uh, pass this, this ordinance tonight. Um, it's that important and it's that vital to our, our church and our community, especially in light of all that is going on in our society right now. Uh, I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Pastor. John, can I ask you, uh, before I ask anyone else here to speak, if anyone else has got any, uh, questions? Is there exemptions?
Uh, what we have been told in the state of Tennessee, in order to meet the definition of being a utility, that if it's a utility, everybody pays, just like you don't get exempted from paying for water or gas, if, uh, if you set this up according to the definition of a utility in the state of Tennessee, then every user of that utility must pay the fee. And, uh, by, one of the things you do by incorporating these expenses for drainage and, uh, that, from the street department, in addition to the water quality, incorporating water quantity, is it makes everybody in the city of Long War City a beneficial user of the system, because they're all getting the benefit of your street network and its drainage, so. Uh, we've been told if you exempt people, it's no longer a legal utility.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak?
I have, I have a question to ask.
Ask him, Mr. Varner.
I think it's always interesting to follow the money trail when, when things come down from our federal government to us. And so the federal gov, someone can correct me, this might be very simple, but I don't understand it. If, if the federal government has passed this mandate to the states, and the states have in turn passed this to the communities around it, within the state, that it will all raise this certain amount of taxes because of that mandate, where is that money going to go ultimately? If we're not going to monitor the runoff and see who's in noncompliance, what's the money going to be used for? Is it going to disappear in that great hole up in Washington DC and it just, it just disappears?
No, I would assume.
And I, and I completely understand what you're saying, um, and I find it interesting as well to follow that money trail. But, you know, we will be using it for, and I know, I know that you're harping on the idea of, you know, a lack of monitoring of the quality of, of the water and the runoff, but we will be using it to maintain the system, to vacuum out the system. And also, you know, the reason why, and we've skirted around this, the reason why to do a utility fee is so that we can actually put money back from year to year. It'll be a special fund in order to have money there when infrastructure fails. You know, we have red clay pipe in the ground in some areas of town, and, you know, the goal in this special fund is to set money back from year to year.
Storm sewer systems, properly designed, require very little maintenance. They have to send a crew out to get the trash out of a box holder and that sort of thing.
Right, and we do that, we do that.
It costs a fair amount to build them, but it's very little maintenance.
It is expensive to maintain them, though.
But, but, uh, we've had a perfectly, we had a perfectly working storm sewer system since, since I've been around this burg. I just can't understand how, how this is, you know, as far as runoff, when we talk about the runoff, uh, once, once, you know, there is more instant runoff, because we have all the roads and all the parking lots and whatever that we used to not have, but once the ground is saturated, we, we all have a hundred percent runoff, and, and we don't have to, we don't have to use a runoff factor anymore, and that, so as we develop, we still have, ultimately we have the same amount of runoff that we ever had. So this money will be put back for future use, is that right?
Part of it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I appreciate, uh, everyone's comments, and certainly, they're certainly valid, and, uh, again, myself, or city council leader one, enjoys, uh, implementing, uh, if they decide to do so, a, a fee of any sorts. Uh, I do firmly believe that, uh, by listening to the experts, and, and of course, I'm certainly not the expert, and, and we have them with us tonight, and that's the reason that I asked you down here to try to, uh, give you all some extra information, and then, and again, once again, I understand about the churches and the nonprofits, and, and that's certainly, uh, something that, uh, with the help of the city attorney and, and, uh, city administrator, and certainly tried to explore. I do disagree with the pastor, respectfully, uh, it's, it's, uh, we reduced taxes four years ago, we didn't have to do that, uh, we didn't get any publicity for doing it, so, uh, nobody would have known, uh, if we'd have done it, if we hadn't done it, uh, but we did anyhow, so we did give back fifty-four thousand dollars in the first year and, and continue, and continue, uh, as it saves. And, uh, and of course, the property tax is going from one oh six to ninety-nine cents this year in the seventeenth, eighteenth budget, so, uh, and we had the option of taking the certified rate or keeping it one oh six, and, and we chose not to do that either. So I respectfully disagree with you on that regard. But I do, uh, I do hope that city council, and certainly I'll make you this promise, will relook at the nonprofits and the churches again, if city councils decide to move forward. I, I will remind city council that the, uh, the budget is balanced, and it comes with a stormwater fee included in that budget. If you choose to do differently, then, uh, keep in mind what Miss Hunt said about passing the budget, and, uh, we will have to, uh, I think, probably, we will have to recess at this point, and back to the drawing board. I don't know what we do, but I just will wait and see, but, uh, with that being said, we'll move into the item, agenda one, is consideration city council adopting ordinance or authorizing the acceptance of a stormwater utility fee as named and dated by Congress. This is the final reading. You have any comments? Do I most appropriate? Do I motion where appropriate? What does City Council want to do?
Well, I, I think I made the motion last time and, uh, I think it's something we have to do. Irregardless of the way some people say it, I, I made this thing last time as well. It is a mandate. It's a federal mandate, passed to the state, the state's passed it to us because we fell under the MS4. And, uh, it's not real hard to understand that that money has to come from somewhere for the last five years. We have allowed our budget to just stay status quo. Everybody's asking for fire trucks, new police vehicles. We actually borrowed money this year to borrow, or to buy new police vehicles. We didn't have a choice. Because we've let this thing slide too many years and we've spent 200, $300,000 a year to make this MS4 work and using the annual budget money to do it. And came a time, we had to do something differently. You know, we had to have a fee. And, you know, I sit as chairman as the, of the Budget Committee, and I, I know what we've done for the last five years. Several of our supervisors back here, uh, in the audience, they'll tell you, we've told them not to increase their budget from the year before because we have no funding. You know, we had, the money was already earmarked for something different. And so they've had no increase in their budgets for the last five years. There's no increase in them again this year, but maybe next year. If, if everything works out okay, maybe next year we could buy, uh, a fire truck. We'll put an extra employee on the fire department that we have, uh, left four positions open. I could be wrong, it could be three. Four, four positions unfilled because we had no revenue to fill those positions. And, you know, it's, it's time now we catch back up and this is the only way we can do it, is to quit spending money out of the general fund to fund the stormwater, uh, system and start us in a different direction. And I, you know, I just felt like we, we had to do this. And I know you all weren't aware of that, that we put this thing off, we keep the can down the road for five years, now's the time it had to happen. And I do apologize as well to the churches and nonprofit groups. It is, it is in, in the regulations that there's no exceptions. What we need probably to do, maybe we could be together as, together as a group and go talk to our legislators or senators and congressmen, whatever, to change that law to where you all can be exempt. I would love for it to happen, and I think everybody on this council would love to see that happen. But there's, there's no provision in the law that allows that to happen. And because we have to move forward tonight and get this done, and then we'll work on that later. I apologize, but, uh, my motion stands. Thank you.
Okay, do you make a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, do you have a second? All right, second, Mr. Shields, any other questions? Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Pass.
Shields. Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Go back to Mr. Johnson. Is that a no vote or a yes vote?
Well, let me explain something to you here.
Okay.
Before I think that, well, I'm, I'm, I've got several phone calls on this issue.
Okay.
And a lot of people out there are upset.
Sure they are.
And, well, I know they are, but they are the ones that put us in office. And, uh, I, I work for them, respect them, and, uh, I think we need to look this over a little bit more, see what we can do. So therefore, I just, I'm not, I, I'm just.
I thoroughly respect that, Mr. Johnson, and I think members of this City Council has the responsibility to, and we're governing responsibly. And, uh, sometimes that, uh, people that's, uh, members of the audience or elsewhere may not totally agree and, uh, I would certainly hate to see us in a, in a position like Flint, Michigan, because I guarantee you, these people right here and a whole lot more would be right here with us, our actress would want us to do something, which we didn't. Again, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, we have a, we have a responsibility and, and I, you know, long for political reasons, but to uphold, to keep the city moving forward, and that's how I feel and don't want to make enemies, but, uh, that's just, that's just how I feel about it. Motion passes. Mr. Johnson, same, I'm assuming. Item number two is consideration of City Council adopting ordinance for the annual budget for the general fund, State Street Eight Fund, Community Development Fund, Downtown VIP Fund, Sanitation Fund, Capital Project One Fund, Stormwater Utility Fee Fund, Lenore City DEA Fund, Lenore City State Drug Fund for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. This is the final reading, Miss Hunt.
I don't, I guess everybody's leaving. I, I just heard rumbles of missing money and stuff, so I want to make sure they all hear that money was getting to the bank.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, I'm glad you're ready. But anyway, we have struggled since '07 with our, you know, with our department heads, and I think everyone should appreciate a fireman or policeman getting to their residence in two minutes. So you have to pay for that when you're living in the city. So my budget is where it is.
All right. Any discussion? Do I motion where appropriate? Motion by Vice Mayor, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Henlon. Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
All right, item three is consideration of City Council adopting ordinance to provide revenue for the municipality of Lenore City, county of Loudoun, Tennessee for the property tax year 2017, Miss Hunt.
Okay, again, since 1990, our, so our property tax was a dollar third in 1990. This is 2017, and it is 0.9955. Four years ago, the certified tax rate was 109. We took the 106, and you're right, nobody was here to thank you for saving them that money for four years.
Nobody helped us with that.
So.
Man, they put it on the website, I guess. He's not in here protecting himself, so I keep, uh, keep talking about him, I guess.
Please feel after a stir and trouble.
That's all right.
Again.
We love you, forgive you, releasing, don't we, preacher?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, the property tax is 0.9955.
All right, do I motion where appropriate?
So move.
Uh, I think he beat you to it. Henlon's second.
I'll say.
Or Mr. Hines, second. All right, roll call.
So Mr. Henlon made that motion?
Uh, Mr. Shields made the motion, Mr. Hines, second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it, Mike. Item four is consideration of City Council adopting ordinance for the annual budget for Lenore City Schools for fiscal year July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. And I think we, if I remember correctly, we have taken et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Gina Mallory here, Dr. Barker, Dr. Barker, do you have anything you want to add? About not recognizing.
Thank you. Uh, we'd just like to present to you our budget for this upcoming year. Uh, once again, I do understand tough budget years, this has been one for us as well, so you will see, this is a $21 million budget, and we are working hard to make sure that we're using taxpayers' money to, to do the best job we can for students. So I appreciate your support. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or.
Certainly, Dr. Barker, we appreciate the job you do and, uh, your staff and, uh, we, uh, we, I know you work, uh, you and your staff work very hard to, uh, keep your budget in line and, uh, you and I talk quite often and during this time, and we appreciate everything you do, appreciate the job you do.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take it one at a time here for the, uh, do I motion on the general purpose fund? Mr. Shields makes motion with vice general purpose, do you have a second?
I'll say.
Second, Ms. Walker, any other questions? Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Do I motion on the sales tax fund?
So move.
Motion, Mr. Henlon, to have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Walker, any other questions? Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
For the federal projects fund. Do I have a motion? Motion by the Vice Mayor, do you have a second? Second, Mr. Hines. Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
And do I motion for the food service fund? Motion, Mr. Shields, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Walker, any other questions? Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
All right, item five is consideration of City Council regarding adoption of ordinance to advance Section 8101 of the Lenore City Municipal Code defining alcoholic beverages to, to reflect current state law. Miss Hunt?
Okay, this is just adopting state law in our, um, charter to define alcoholic beverages.
Any questions? Mr. Shields makes motion where appropriate, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, any other questions? Roll call.
Henlon.
Yes.
Hines.
Uh.
Johnson.
Yep.
Shields.
Uh.
Simpson.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Item six is consideration of City.